This meeting will come to order. Hammond City Council Public Hearing, May 28, 2019. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wales.
Present.
Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Public hearing, number one, an ordinance for rezoning by Jamestown Properties LLC to rezone 16 lots 9A through 16B of the Hundred Oaks subdivision located on Fern Street from RS 11 to RS 5. In accordance with the survey of Brett J. Martin dated 4/18/2019, recommended approval by the zoning commission, Tracy Shalacy.
Good afternoon, council. I'm here to represent our zoning commission. They recommended a rezoning of these properties located on Fern Street from RS 11 to RS 5. The previous lots were approximately 75 feet. The new lots are about 50 feet. Rezoning is what we're asking you guys today. They've already had the subdivision approved by the planning commission. And if you have any questions, we have a representative for the owner here today.
Did you say they were originally 75 feet?
Approximately, they were.
I thought they were around 100, huh?
Somewhere 100, somewhere of 75. There was a range in there. It was nine lots, I believe, originally. Eight lots or nine lots. And now they're looking to do 16 lots, which are all about 50 feet fronting on Fern.
So they reduced them to 50 feet they wanted to.
Correct.
From about 100.
Correct.
You doubled.
That was kind of negotiated to leave the ones on Parker Boulevard, the 100-foot lots, because there's an existing house on Lot 4. So it wouldn't directly impact her, those lots fronting on Parker.
Same subdivision, right? Hundred Oaks.
It is.
Gotcha. Should we have Ms. Lee, do you want to address? No? Anyone here from the public on this matter?
Mr. J., he's a neighbor.
Stitch your name and address for the record, please.
I'm TJ Seal, 4415 Parker Boulevard, Hammond, 70403. I was the original developer of Hundred Oaks subdivision. And I am the property owner on the west side of Parker Boulevard. And I'm a developer of Forbes Farms, which is on the east side of Fern Street. I think this rezoning proposal is a good idea, and it will put property in commerce at a useful price point. And I'm in favor of it for a lot of reasons. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say something on here. The findings on here, it made a point of, you know, will it diminish the value surrounding properties, which there's no answers on here, which, you know, if you go from 100 to 50-foot lot, and you have a large home on the backside, on a larger lot, I mean, it's definitely going to affect to somewhat extent the value of that property. Will it essential care to the neighborhood? Depending on what they're putting on there, it could. Traffic congestion of hazard, I mean, Old Covian Highway, I mean, it's pretty narrow right now. It's pretty, very highly trafficked. You have about probably 50 or 60, maybe even more, I'm probably being conservative. Howl is going to be built this coming up year right next to Forbes Farm, adding on. Have 24 across the street. To me, I would think an additional 100 home sites on that road and within a year would definitely probably burden some drainage, utilities, traffic congestion, hazardous. So I just don't understand where we at on that as far as these questions really aren't answered on my sheet.
Well, Jennifer Lee, I'm attorney for Jamestown Properties. And some of the considerations that were made were pertaining only to our subdivision. And of course, you look at the holistic view of, you know, the traffic and impact on various things, but we're not looking specifically at the other subdivisions and the other homes. We're talking about eight additional lots. So eight, you know, traffic from eight additional home sites. So Fern Street is, you know, there's, we've looked at that and whether that street has capacity to handle those additional, that additional traffic, and it does.
Has anybody driven through Fern and saw the water goes right across the street when it's raining pretty hard down on Fern? I mean, it pretty floods pretty good. That's why I just wanted to make sure that, you know.
Well, this is.
This drainage here, you know, and utilities over, I mean, it seems like that kind of falls in that line of, you know, maybe a not-so-good idea.
Well, I think as part of the review, it went through the planning and zoning, and the city had to look at things and, you know, drainage, et cetera, and that was done. And the zoning commission has recommended rezoning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here on this matter? Any questions, council?
I'd like to make a motion to.
Wait until the end. Yeah, sorry. We'll move into our regular session. Roll call, please. Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wales.
Present.
Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
As you please rise for our prayer, I ask Councilman Andrews to lead us in prayer.
Let's take a moment to pay honor and respect to those that protect and serve that have lost their lives in the line of service. Most gracious love and eternal heaven and father, we just thank you right now, giving you the glory and honor that is due your name. Father, thank you that this is the day that you have made. We shall rejoice and we shall be glad about it. So Father God, we thank you for allowing your darling son to die in our place for our sins right now, for that we are turning to grateful. We thank you, Father God, that tonight everything will be done decent and orderly and pleasingly in your sight, where you will get all the glory and all the honor and all the praise. I just continue to bless my members right now on this board as we continue to serve, continue to bless the city administration, continue to bless our police officers and our firemen right now, dear heaven and father. We just thank you for it all, and continue to let your light shine upon our path, and we just give you glory and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Now for our pledge, I'll invite all veteran and active military, please render the proper salute.
Blessed be the children of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every single justice for all.
For the minutes of May 14, 2019, reports. I'm sorry, I totally skipped that. Reports, any council reports?
I got a report. I had been getting complaints about the streets on Howard Street that was overlaid by the parish and another street on the corner of Phoenix Avenue and JW Davis, which in the process of me complaining about it and a citizen complaining about it, I see we got the street fixed. But one of the issues that I was dealing with, the city and the parish need to be on a better page of what's going on. But what I found out, the parish did their part, the city went and towed the street up after the parish let them know that they're going to do the street six months in advance. And I just said, we need to have a better system of what's going on. It don't make sense to get a street overlaid and then we turn around and tear the street up. I mean, that's just wasting taxpayers' money. And so we got that problem solved. Another issue that I'm having is I keep getting a lot of complaints about speed bumps. And I've been talking to Robert Morgan, but I can't get no real answer or no true answer. I think he talking according to how you feel versus the rules and regulations. Thank you.
Did Robert Morgan mention to you the process of making sure that the homeowners are right where the speed bumps go, sign, and know that there's going to be, you'll hear the noise, but if they all sign off that the bump, the speed bump can be placed there? Did you have that conversation?
Yes. And what I did, for everybody asking me about the speed sign, a speed bump, what I do, I go through the entire neighborhood, that street. Everybody okay with it. They say the street, the speed bump can actually be in front of their house. What they concerned about is the traffic, the speed. And I know it don't make sense, in my opinion, it don't make sense for all these officers to be in here now, and each one of them have to sit there and stand by a road all day long to keep the traffic from going fast.
Did they sign the paperwork?
Yeah, they'll sign it.
No, did they sign it?
They will.
Okay, so they need to sign it. All right. When they sign it, we'll go ahead and put the bump there. Also, on that other piece, I'm not sure, I haven't checked into it, but was there a drainage problem, or was there a reason they dug up the road?
Sewer, water.
Sewer?
No.
Where the parish was? All right, we'll check into it.
But, no, it's complete now. They done fixed the problem. Yeah. But they covered up every manhole that they had on Howard Street.
Who covered it? The parish when they overlaid it?
The parish when they overlaid.
Okay, so we went and fixed that, and that's, everything's okay with the road?
Oh, yeah, it's fixed now. Yeah, it's fixed.
All right, so we'll get on to speed bump. We just need the citizens to sign that form.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Andrews?
I just have one concern that I would like to bring up. I don't know if anyone else here on the board has been dealing with this. I think it would be better if it was possible that if some of the department heads could attend the city council meetings. There are things that are brought up, and we in search for answers, and we can't get an answer, we're never able to get a definite answer, or the answer that we're given sometimes is not the correct answer. I think that it'd be good if someone here, if these questions come up, they'll be able to answer it publicly. That way, we'll be able to be on the same page and not playing a cat and mouse game. Everyone that is sitting up here, minus three people, have been elected into the position in which they hold. And sometimes it seems as if if someone's reaching out to me and I'm trying to get something resolved or answer for them, and it takes a long period of time, they'll come back to me as if I'm not doing my job. And at times, that's not the case. And, but I think that it would be better, I don't know how you guys feel about this, if someone else, someone from any department be held accountable to attend the city council meetings, or someone from that department to also attend the city council meetings. But if that person is coming, please be able to give us the correct answer.
Well, I think in answer to that, I think if we have something on the agenda for that department, you see C.C. Gagne, you see Tracy, you see Jana here for the department, you see Maeve, there's something on the agenda that definitely will be here. Also, if you want to eliminate the cat and mouse game, come through the administration. Let us get with the department, find out what problems you have, and let us get back with you on it, especially if you feel like you, you know, it's dragging, getting around. So come to us, that's what we're here for.
Steve, say anything.
I sent a letter today about Energy Request. Any information on that? Any update on the letter I sent out?
We are waiting on Energy to provide confirmation of receipt of an ordinance that was passed in 2006 that established the franchise agreement. And so that's where we are at this point. Andre has already reviewed the letter and is working on his response as a whole.
Okay.
It was a 25-year agreement. There are 12 years left in the agreement. So as soon as we get the information you're asking about.
Okay, thank you.
May I speak on this?
Hey, Ms. Yunes.
Sure.
I have sent that request to our contracts department, and I have not received a response from them. Probably is due to the excessive modifications that we've had during Memorial on holiday. But I am pursuant to that information.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Yunes.
I've spoken with the boys, you know, to try and track it down.
Yeah, I just hadn't heard anything back about my letter, so I was just trying to get a status update. Yeah, appreciate it.
I have the request, has not fallen on deaf ears.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yunes. Steve? All right, mayor report, please.
Many of you remember Operation Barbecue Relief when Livingston Parish and we had major floods. They fed thousands and thousands of folks all the way through Baton Rouge as well. They're coming back into town, they wanted to feed, do a feeding for the parish. So John Hare with the food, Our Daily Bread, will be feeding and transporting meals on Saturday throughout the parish to all of the people that they normally feed in the parish. Also Belinda Tropanier with Parish's Supported Living, which is right here locally in town, will be feeding 300 of her customers that she normally feeds as well. And she'll also be working with Vernon Allen Ministries, their church, and they'll be feeding. Also, Mike Whitlow, who's part of that panel, has contacted Dawson Primes. And the first responders in Tangi Parish are being asked, if you want to come, please come get a meal as well. So we're prepared to serve. We're going to be cooking it at the Recreation Center, Michael Kenny Center, 5,000 to 6,000 meals. And we're hoping to get that distributed throughout the parish. If you know anyone in neighborhoods and families that would need meals, please come by between the hours of 11:00 and 3:00 p.m. on Saturday, this Saturday. And not to spend too much time here, I'd like to refer my time to Edwin, Chief Edwin Bergeron. We have a special presentation you'd like to give.
Thank y'all for letting me be here. About a week ago, on the 21st, one of our officers was at a training class, left the training class, and was heading home. He got off the interstate, we got off the interstate, and there was a car kind of to the side of the road, kind of just going along in the grass. Officer believed it to be a medical emergency. He got out of his car, he approached, now he was in plainclothes, but he believed it to be a medical emergency, so he gets out to assist this person. Ryan, if you could step forward. This is Officer Ryan Bergeron, he was actually the officer that was out there. As Ryan engages this subject, he can see something wasn't just right. He tried to get the subject to exit the car, he wouldn't exit the car. At this point, several subjects stepped out to assist. One of them was Mr. Anthony Sampey, and the other one's Kaylee Patterson. There was a third subject that was unable to be here tonight. Well, as Officer Bergeron asked the subject to step out, ended up removing him from the car. The guy ended up being under either PCP or some type of mojo, and became an enraged narcotics fight. The fight got pretty vicious. Mr. Sampey, when I spoke with him, he said he's the strongest man he's ever felt. These citizens stepped out and helped our officer, protecting our officer, fighting with our officer to get this guy custody, just on their own, their own deal, their own accordance. At this point, I want to recognize both of them, I'll tell you a little bit about them. Mr. Sampey is, he's married to his wife Toni, 31 years. He has two daughters, Heather and Megan, son-in-law Derek, and two grandchildren, Riley and Audrey. He's their hero from when their daughter sat, he's always been. The other one is Ms. Kaylee Patterson, she's from Jackson, Mississippi originally. She is a current student at Southeastern in nursing program. She also works at the mental health hospital in Covington. Her father's here with her tonight. Just wanted to recognize, I'm here at the council meeting, I'm going to present y'all each with a plaque, just give me one second. Hereby presenting, was presented recognition of your courageous actions on the 21st day of May in the year of 2019, when you risked your own personal safety and selflessly assisted a Hammond police officer. You acted with courage and foresight, strength and wisdom, and took bold action to protect a Hammond police officer and potentially the lives of other citizens. Your heroic actions are worthy of the highest citizen recognition. On this 28th day of May in the year of 2019, you're here presented with the Citizen Hero Award. Ryan, you want to say something?
I want to personally thank everyone that stopped that day. We really appreciate that. We know things can definitely make a target of events that wouldn't allow us to go home if maybe y'all didn't do that. At this time, could Mr. Anthony and Ms. Kaylee step up? Myself, along with the Hammond Police, I'd like to give y'all something, show y'all my appreciation.
Guys, thank y'all again from the Hammond Police Department and the city of Hammond. Y'all truly are heroes to step in and help us when we need assistance, and we just thank you and thankful for citizens like y'all that are willing to help.
I'd like to say something, too. You did a terrific job, kept it cool. Just glad I was there to help you. Thank you, we appreciate that.
Are there any new businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized? Now we'll move on to our minutes of May 14, 2019, please. Need a motion?
I make a motion that we accept our minute from our May 14 board meeting.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Resolutions, old business, none, new business. Number one, a resolution to authorize the city of Hammond to enter into contract with Peregrine Corporation for Utility Billing Services in the approximate annual amount of $40,572. Janet Thurmond.
We administered RFP 1924. We did receive back four proposals. Peregrine was the lowest proposal. We have done business with them in the past. We have a successful business relationship with them, so we're just asking council's
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution to purchase a four-wheel-drive utility tractor for the Parks and Grounds Department from Kubota Tractor, using the local Kubota authorized dealer, Star Equipment, as a distributor in the amount of $33,630.40, state contract number 440010012. Janet Thurmond.
Parks and Grounds Department was approved for this purchase in their original budget for 2019. We're just asking for approval. We did reach out to another vendor, Evergreen Tractor of Covington, to make sure that we was price comparison, and their price did come in $34,568, so we are getting a good value. So we're just asking for council's approval to make the purchase.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Rogers Ready Mix LLC for ready mix concrete services. Janet Thurmond.
We did put an RFP out for this. Our contract actually was not up. Rogers Ready Mix wanted to increase their pricing, so we went ahead and rebid it out to see if we can get better pricing. They were the only one that actually submitted a proposal, so we're asking council's approval to proceed with the contract.
When these are sent out for proposal, how are they sent?
We send them to the list of vendors that we generally use for the city, which right now will be La Forge, Tyson Ready Mix, and Rogers. We also publish it in the newspaper and on our website.
And how long do they have, usually, how long is the bid time?
21 days.
21 days, okay. Any questions, comments? Pleasure, council.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, a resolution to approve the mayor to enter into a contract with Pond's Food Corporation for Frozen Dinners for Hammond City Jail, approximately $33,854.70. Janet Thurmond.
The current contract was come to an end, so we had to put out a new proposal. Same thing, we sent it out to all our past vendors, S&amp;W, PA Menard, and Pond's Food. Pond's Food was the only one that responded. We did advertise in the newspaper and on our website. So we're just asking council's approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Janet. We'll move into, we have a number of demolition properties, so we'll start with number five. A resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at 107 East David Drive, 91% damaged, located in Council District Number 1. The owner is Houston Young Edall, 360 East Pecan Street, Ponteau, Louisiana. I imagine there might be questions about the process and everything, so we can kind of go through all of that and then go further down.
Good evening, yes, this is the first presentation to the new council. Welcome. We are typically what initiates the process for blight and the demolition of a structure. We'll have fire, of course, obvious reasons for having one torn down. The structural integrity, based on weather conditions or termite damage. Many cases, there may be vandalism after, which one of those situations may occur. We do a pretty detailed percentage of damage of calculations while we calculate, and we determine whether or not that structure meets 50% or more in damage. That's based on the foundation, based on the walls, structural walls. We do a calculation of the seals. We also do a calculation of the joists, the ceiling joists, the exterior walls, the interior walls, the finished floor, the subfloor, the sheet rock, or whatever type of cosmetic interior may be on it, may be stucco or on the exterior, might even have paneling in some of the older structures. Electrical condition, plumbing conditions, and all of those collaboratively comes to a percentage of damage, and we have a formular that calculates the percentage of damage. Visually, you generally can kind of look at a structure and say that it probably needs some attention, not necessarily that it would qualify for demolition. So in our profession, we look at the structure. Aesthetically and cosmetically, it's not a reason to tear it down. We get a lot of calls on structures that may not have the necessary curial appeal that others want as neighbors, but we have to go ahead and calculate those percentages to confirm that the structure qualifies for demolition. By state statute, we have to notify the owners, give them proper opportunity to appear to this, to this meeting, 30 days generally the timeframe prior to the meeting. After which, whatever decision's made to either do repair or demolition, there's a 30-day minimum before we can proceed with the step after that, after the council meeting. So we, we've done a lot of research, we've done quite a few phone calls, a lot of times we're proactive if the structure's deteriorating in a bad manner, and if it's hazardous to adjoining property owners. We get a lot of calls from neighbors that initiate, we appreciate citizens being concerned about properties that are adjacent to theirs. Of course, you know that affects property values. And so that's kind of how we do the initial sighting. We don't do a random selection. It's a combination of citizens' complaints and blight that's obviously in dilapidated conditions.
I have a question with this, the picture that we were given, at least specifically for this one, it has the "Warning, Unsafe" sign. When does that go on, and how long, I mean, does it, has that been on there for a while before you bring it to us?
It depends.
We see these all over town, obviously.
Yeah, it depends. If there's been a call, and I won't call it an address, but if you see one that's terribly deteriorated or burned to the point where it's completely open, that constitutes in our mind, as building department, as an emergency. So when that sign goes on, typically within 60 days, it'll be submitted to city council, with that included 30-day requirement of notification to the owner to appear.
Do we have like a limit for the year, a cap?
That also depends on condition. There may be, there may be a structure that's a concern for a neighbor, so we'll cite it as unsafe because of routine loitering, or kids throwing rocks at windows, or, you know, something of that nature, that may initiate a concern by the adjoining property owners. Doesn't necessarily qualify that structure for demolition structurally, because it doesn't meet the deterioration of percentage of damage, but it is a concern. Consider what you would call blight, but it doesn't necessarily qualify for demolition. Keep in mind that the owners have rights as well. You can't just, because of aesthetic reasons or curial appeal, go and tear something down because it's not being repaired necessarily, but it may not, may not have enough of a structural. You can't just, because of aesthetic reasons or curb appeal, go and tear something down because it's not being repaired necessarily, but it may not have enough of a structural deterioration to tear it down. In that case, we try to keep it secure by boards, and keep those signs up, and cause that owner to maintain the property from grass and weeds so that it doesn't look as bad as it should look.
So say someone with this 107 East David, is that your example? It may not be this is how this happened, but a neighbor calls, obviously a big problem. You go out there, you stick that sign up immediately for something this bad?
If it qualifies, it goes right on.
Do you go in there and start measuring at that first complaint?
Not necessarily, not necessarily. Depend on, now, in a situation like this, this is pretty obvious that it's not going to have a problem meeting the qualifications of percentage of damage. So in this case, yes, the sign is posted, may as well go ahead and measure, and, like I said, we've been doing this so many years. We could, as inspectors, we go and we look at a structure, pretty much know if the electrical will qualify as demolition, the walls, the roof, after a walk-through.
Other than fire, I'm sorry I'm asking all the questions, but other than like a fire, these, a lot of these things look like they've been going on a long time.
Oh, yes, it takes quite a while. If the roof, anyone who knows anything about structure, if the roof is not compromised, if there's no penetration in the decking of the roof or shingles, then water would not go into the attic or into the ceiling area of the structure. That being the case, other than vandalism or termites, it'll maintain its integrity for quite some time.
So let me make sure I'm following you correctly on this. There's 30 days to notify the property owner, right?
To appear, to appear to council, correct.
Then, if I'm not mistaken, you said another 30 days after that?
Yeah, pending your decision tonight, that state statute requires us to give that owner due process to either acquire demolition permit, acquire renovation permit, or allow the city to do what they do in 30 days. They have a right to appeal, they don't have to agree.
So we're looking at a total of 60 days here?
If all goes smoothly, yes, if all goes smoothly. It's, I'm trying not to put a 60-day cap on the process because that's certainly not the case typically. It's usually, with an abandoned house, you're probably talking six months from the normal process, unless it's extremely bad.
Mr. DiViterio asked this question about the time limit and, I guess, the process in selecting these homes. If they are, his question was, again, was there a cap on how many homes that are done a year? And the reason why I'm following up with the same question that he asked is simply because we've been on this council for over 60 days, and this is the first we were receiving of demolitions to take place, and I'm quite sure it probably was more before that.
Correct.
I just want to get a clear understanding of the ballpark in which we operate in with this, because like you said, you receive phone calls, and we have received phone calls too. So also, we've been educated here tonight as well on what we'll be able to provide for our constituents when they call as well.
Actually, our office is, I mean, we're always available. If you see something in your district that are concerned, we had, Mr. Wells requested a potential list of ongoing properties that may qualify, may or may not qualify for demolition. These are houses that we've looked at and we've gotten calls on, we were proactive on in certain areas, because remember, code enforcement, we're doing multiple citations, abandoned vehicles, overgrown lots and grass, signs, illegal signs. So we're, while we're patrolling the areas for other complaints, we're encountered, or we may run into, some of these properties that may qualify for possible demolition.
So yes, I guess, I don't think my question answered, is there like a cap as far as a budget-wise, getting at like, I mean, obviously, we probably can't do 100, you know, in a year, so is there a cap on that, or is there really?
Not necessarily, no, it's not a cap. I, we, after the 30 days, once they're condemned, we have to do, again, due process, have to do a bid process so that it's open for public bid, and depending on what the lowest bidder comes in at, I could give you a range of what we typically get for bids, but it's difficult for us to pinpoint what each house may cost. Some of those guys bid based on square footage of houses, the parish landfill where the mandatory dumping has to go, they're charging, I think, in the neighborhood of $33 to $35 a ton now. So with that being the case, they have to spend at least, on a standard house, they're probably spending about $1,200 per structure. And so they're hauling, they're dumping their fuel. So a house, a standard house, would probably run anywhere from the neighborhood of $45 to $5,500. And for a budget year of $55,000 to $60,000, you're talking 10, 12 houses. But it's been our experience that after this meeting, each council meeting and presentation for demolition, the owners have been very active in tearing their own structures down. So it's hard for us to say what would happen during a budget year. Typically, we spend all the money each year for the budget, which in the past has been about $50,000, $50,000 to $60,000.
If you had more money in the budget, could you do more houses?
We could expedite, and we can also do a large group of houses. Now, houses, again, are only generated by deterioration, by fire, by vandalism, so we don't know how many houses we're going to have a year. But for what we currently have as potential houses on the list, it's about 33, in addition to these 12 that we're presenting tonight. And if it's consistently done as in the past, 50 to 75% of those will be demolished by the owners, so the city probably will only be doing about 10 of those, which will take about $50,000 to $60,000.
In the mayor's proposed budget, this year is $50,000. This upcoming year, the mayor proposed to do $75,000 for demolition. Just to give you a benchmark.
Y'all have a question, please?
Yes.
On this li, on this list, can you hear me? And thank you for coming out to, Mr. Mitchell. Look, on this here list, when did y'all come up with this here list on these houses need to be demoed?
Is that the list that we provide, our office provides, potential? Oh, the ones that's on the actual council?
The ones actually on the list for tonight that we're going to discuss.
Some of those, some of those were, you'd have to look at your dates of estimate of damage. They were a variety of dates. I would say that in total, all 12 were in, within the last 12 months.
Okay, you told me all 12 was within the last 12 months. So, on the list that I got from Mr. CC, they come out of y'all's office, I only see one of these houses on my list.
On the demolition list?
On the demolition list. Only one house on the list that you gave, on the list that I got from Mr. CC. And what I did, I gave the list to the city councilman, just to verify, make sure I'm not wrong, because I do make mistakes.
Now, I want to make sure I'm clear in what you're asking. You're saying the list that you, that you were given of the potential houses?
No.
Of that group, you only have one on this agenda tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
So you talk, you're saying within the last 12 months? Now, I'm going by what you say now, because I do make mistakes.
We all do.
Within the last 12 months, every house that you have on this list for tonight to be demoed. And somehow, my list not matching up with your list. But this is the list I got out of your office, so.
Either I misunderstand the question, or you misunderstand the question. Your question was, is how many of these houses that I'm presenting tonight was on the list, or how long they've been on the list?
Okay, hold up.
For presentation.
Can I get my list, please? Okay, let me give you this here list. This is the list come out of y'all's office. And see, this is what I was trying to say, Mr. Mayor, nobody just trying to make a confusion or nothing, but see, these are the things that we go through. When I be trying to ask questions, I never get a clear understanding. And so, this is the list that I got from you all two weeks ago.
Okay.
What houses need to be demoed in my district. That's all I asked for. But y'all gave me a list of every house that's in the city that need to be demoed, only.
Of the list that you have, that we submitted to you of the potential, and look at, look at your headline of your sheet, and it says, "The demolition is for the calendar year, budget year of 2019 to 2020." So what we do is, we formulate a list, and what happens in general, the worst of the houses on the list are priority, unless it's creating a vandalism issue or a police matter, some type of criminal act. So we try to do a budgetary presentation so that, so that we can make sure that we spend the budget. Now, if there's a, if there's a house in your district that you feel is urgent, just let us know. We'll take a look at that. I don't, I don't sort these out by district, I sort them out based on condition.
So how many, and you may not be able to answer this right now, how many of the houses that he put on a list have you inspected?
He hasn't given me any lists. I, we submitted him with a list of what we have moving forward for this coming budget year.
I thought you had a list as well.
No, sir, I got the list from CC's office. The list that I'm showing him, that's the list I got out of their office. I got their list two weeks ago. The houses that they gave me, only one on here. And then, how many times I done called you about houses that need to be towed down in the area?
I could say none, if you want to know the truth. I mean, called me about houses that need to be torn down?
Yeah, I never called you about some houses.
Me personally?
Yeah, no, I'm talking about called office.
Oh, I'm not.
I called office, and we talked about it. The houses on the list, that people is having problem with, people stealing their water, stealing their lights. Houses off of Washington Avenue, you and I, we talked about it. And you can't recall that moment?
That, to say a house is being vandalized for theft of water, doesn't tell me that it needs to be demolished.
Okay, this what you did.
It tells me it has a concern, it doesn't tell me that it needs to be demolished.
Now, this what you told.
And keep in mind, councilman, this is the list for 2019, 2020 budget, which is coming up, not, it hasn't come yet.
But this is what I asked you for. And we, I don't want to misunderstand, I don't want you to misunderstand me, and I don't want to misunderstand you. This is what I asked you for, I say, Bobby, when you get a chance, could you go out and look at these houses on Washington Avenue? Now, this is what we talked about.
Okay.
And see, this is the problem that I'm having. See, when I go and talk to one of y'all, and I'm saying, when I say y'all, I'm talking about the city, period. When I talk to you all, y'all tell me something different when I go in the office. And now you stand before the city councilman, and you say something totally different.
I want you to be sure about who you're talking to, because I want to say, you were asking me the question, and what did you say to me?
Yes.
I can't speak for CC, or Keith, or Donna, or any other people in the office, because if I haven't spoken with you about that matter, I can't speak for them.
No.
I'm answering my question for me.
Okay, for you, Bobby, you and I talked. I told you about the houses on Washington Avenue, off of Washington Avenue, that they having problems with the people that's going, staying in the house, crackheads, or what we call them in our neighborhood.
So is it off of Washington, or is it on Washington?
It's off of Washington.
So what does that mean, which street are you talking about?
Off of, what did he, off of Sanders Drive, or?
Well, off of Washington Avenue, you have Kenny, you have Stanley, you have Center.
Center Street.
You have, you have Newman, you have Stovall, you have Williams, you have East Louisa West, you have a lot of streets off of Washington. So maybe that's what the communication problem is, I don't know exactly where you're talking about.
Okay, Bobby, from this point on, we both going to have a clear understanding of what I'm talking about.
I would certainly appreciate that, I would certainly appreciate that, because I'm not, I'm not, micro recollection, I don't know of any house that you're speaking of. We do have one off of Washington.
Okay.
On second on here tonight.
Okay.
For 508.
Look, Carly asked this here question, I mean, President asked this here question here about the sign at 1504 Mooney Avenue. It's on the trailer. Now, this is what I asked Mr. CC, and if I'm not, if I'm not, if I'm saying something wrong, Mr. CC, you help me out. I say, how long does the sign be on the property, and when do the sign come off the property, and when do you have to do something about the sign? Now, from Mr. CC telling me that y'all have no record of when y'all put a sign on a demo property, from what he told me, now I'm asking you. This sign on 1504 Mooney Avenue, I don't want to make no mistake.
That's a burned mobile home, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, what date this here sign was put on this here trailer?
It should have been right after the fire, probably last year.
Last year.
End of last year.
Okay. I'm good for now, thank you.
Okay.
So the budget is $50,000 for the demolition?
Yes, it is.
We spent all, that's going to be all spent, or we have surplus in there?
It'll definitely be spent.
This is what they're working on right now.
Okay. Yeah, keep in mind that we're proactive, but we also, we also have to, and Andre can attest to this, we can't just bully someone's house down. When you're tearing somebody's house down, you have to go through proper research, make sure you're getting the correct owner, make sure you're not, because when I, when we do, and this is not, this is not a two-day letter. This is an extensive process. So when I go to do a calculation of damage, I want to make sure that it's going to proceed to the council. I don't want, and I don't want to use the word waste time, but I don't want to go out and do something that's not going to move forward and be accomplished as to what we're, what our goal is, is to clean up blight and make sure that that property is going to be torn down. So we need to do all of our research initially, make sure, so if you see that sign, what we're trying to do with the sign is deter vandalism, deter injuries for children. It's not about putting the sign there and saying, okay, let's pinpoint today's date as the date we put the sign, so in 60 days, it'll be at the council meeting. I'm not going to promise you that. This is based on condition, it's based on damage, it's based on ability to contact owners. We can't just, we can't put ourselves in a box and say that we're going to do it within 60 days after sign is posted. And I don't want to play games, I don't want to put a sign on there and say, I'm going to bring it to you and don't bring it, and then I don't want to not put a sign on there just because I don't want the 60 days to run out. So we're trying to do what's best for the community and what's safe. That's the goal of the building inspector's office, is to make sure that we're doing things that's benefiting the community.
Are you sufficiently staffed for this process? I mean, could you do more if you had more people, contract work?
Oh, as always, I mean, the more, the more the merrier, of course, but then.
If you had the contract work, could you put people to work doing more than what we're currently doing?
We could, we could do with the staff, make sure I ask you a question correctly, with the staff to go out and efficiently, efficiently find out the condition of a structure. You have to be qualified to do that. You can't just grab someone from anywhere and say, well, this house needs to be torn down, because naturally, if they see the roof facade or the facial falling down, they say, okay, that qualifies. That doesn't necessarily qualify. The eve needs to be repaired, the facial needs to be changed out, but it doesn't qualify for demolition. And so that's, that's the education part that I'm doing with most adjacent property owners, letting them know. And we spend a lot of time in the field communicating with these owners that are concerned, and we totally appreciate property owners that are adjacent to properties, warning structures torn down. But again, we have to make sure that we're not violating that owner's rights, and potentially putting the city in the way of a lawsuit. So we have to make sure that what we're doing is properly done. So yes, more staff, more work, but we have to hire qualified people to do that work.
But you're not being held up by lack of inspectors. In other words, if you hired, if you hired subcontractors to do the inspection, then you would just have a backlog in your office.
If they're qualified to do the inspection, there again, it's, see, a lot of subcontractors only do electrical, or only do heating and air, only do plumbing. We're trained to do multiple inspections, we're combination inspectors, we know how a house goes together. We know how a building goes together, from foundation to the fixture. So that, when someone else is looking at that, they just see what physically looks nice to the eye, or what looks bad to the eye, and that doesn't qualify as demolition. But we will aggressively approach this list, that's why we were able to provide you with the list, because we already had these properties cited and in mind. We're able to provide the list, so they're coming, forthcoming for this new budget year. We'll make sure we tear down a lot of houses in District 3, if that's what the question is.
Yes, that's one of my questions, but look, I have one more question, and I heard you call Andre's name out. The house was demoed on 16, 6, 1610 Live Oak in my district. In the process of this house being demoed, and I got a guy that I talked to was trying to buy this here house, or buy the property, but he said, man, in the process of buying the property, now, you help me out now, just in case I make a mistake this time.
I'm listening.
I'm not going to make too many more mistakes. Okay, he tried to buy this here property, which, in the process of buying the property, the city tore the house down on the property. And did y'all send a notice? And did y'all send a notice to the original owner or to the people that bought the property after taxes?
We contacted the, first of all, the address was 1612. Let's make sure we, on record, we have the correct address.
1612.
1612 Live Oak was this corner of Natchez and Live Oak Street.
Yes.
That property was potentially being acquired by a private investor. At the time, the property was, was in the name of the McCray owner. At the time, the property was condemned by the previous council, which was in October of last year. We did our due diligence through the assessor's office to confirm ownership. So in, in the process of that house being torn down and the acquisition or potential acquisition of the new owner, some paperwork obviously wasn't filed. And the city, the city toured, we notified, to answer your question, we notified the owner that had a percentage of ownership of the, of the property. I was told that it was 60, 60, 40 or 55, 55 at the time the house was torn down in ownership of the two properties.
Okay, to make it clear, y'all tore the house down. Now, I'm listening now.
We did.
Okay. In the process of tearing the house down, who end up having to pay the bill? That's, that's all I'm trying to get to. Who had to pay the bill? The McCraes had to pay the bill or the second person that acquired the property? Who had to pay the bill? That's what I'm trying to get to.
We filed, we filed the property lien to the current owner at the time of demolition. Now, any property that's acquired by someone, they inherit, inherit any liens or demolitions. The whole purpose of the lien is to make sure that the city has the benefit of acquiring their money or being refunded of their monies that they spend for the new owner. If that new owner acquires that property. Now, that timeframe, I'm not sure exactly what the lapsing timeframe was. But to answer your question, it would, it would be carried over to the future owner.
Generally, the old owner is responsible for the money, but they're not paying the bill anyway, especially when we're doing grass as well. So we cut, we lien. We cut, we lien. We demo the house, we lien. So if that owner still didn't pay, whoever comes in to buy that property pretty much knows, oh, it's going to find out, especially if they buy more properties, that that's part of the process, that when you purchase a property, you acquire whatever liens are on that property, comes, you have to pay that, comes off that sale.
Okay, once again, who end up eating the bill? Did the first owner eat the bill or the second owner ate the bill?
Neither.
Just for the record now, because I need to make sure what I'm saying is right. I need to make sure what you're saying is right, because it's not going to just stop right here. And I appreciate it, Mr. Math, for everything you tell me.
Yeah, they, he's, he's correct. Whoever acquires the property, during the title search, it would come up and unless, unless they go and buy it the same day the filing is made and they, and they miss out on it, otherwise, it's the responsibility of the acquiring owner to handle all outstanding liens. But at this point, I don't think either have paid the lien, to answer your question. It's, it's a new lien.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, fine. Thank you.
Now, this lien goes with the loan.
That's correct. So this lien going to go with the new owner, right, of the property?
The new owner sells that property is when all that clears up. If he decides not to pay the debt, it's going to stick with the property.
Both of them have to be notified, though, I'd imagine. So if they're not notified by the city, then...
Title search is going to take care of it. They'll see a lien on it.
I mean, if the, the new owner isn't notified about anything, then, I mean, if they notified the old owner that doesn't own it anymore, then, I mean, how is a new person liable for that? If the city didn't notify both parties, that's, that's, I think, what you were asking, right?
Yes. That's all I was trying to find out.
It all depends on when it was purchased.
Yeah, the dates in the assessor's office and how they file their documentation. Here again, when we file, when we file our liens as a city, we're no longer responsible for tracking the documentation. We, we just, we file a lien, we, we trust the parish to do what they're going to do with collection of liens. We move on to the next location. We don't, we don't have the, the right nor the time to, to track that.
All right, let's go ahead and actually vote on, and get to the issue of 107, East David Drive.
I make a motion for demolition.
Wait, sorry. Do we have anyone here on the public, from the public on this, the owners? Houston Young?
I want to ask a question.
You need to, I'm sorry, can you come up to the, the mic?
See, if I was perching at home...
You need to come up and say the name and address.
Can you come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record? Thank you.
Michael Lindsay, 1111 Edward Neilway, Hammond, Louisiana. The question that I have is like, I heard them two kind of battling a little bit, is, say like, I was perching at home, like you were saying, I was perching at home, and would the city still come tear it down? Y'all give me the opportunity to rebuild the house or remodel the home, or y'all would still come in and tear it down?
It all depends on timing. Everything depends on timing. Whether or not this council or a previous council has already condemned the structure, whether or not we're notified that someone is interested in doing repair, all of those variables come into play. We, we may have already done our bids and we're trying to get the structure down so that we can create a safe...
If I don't have, if I don't have knowledge of that and I said, well, I'm going to go purchase this here home and go through the proper paperwork and everything, and I go spend my money and buy this, this property and stuff, I said, I'm going to remodel this house, and then the next couple of days I come, the house tore down, I mean, how would you handle it?
Somebody lost, somebody missed the title search issue on that, if that's the case.
Another question I have, like, all the houses that y'all tear down, the city get their money back because y'all charged it to the homeowners, correctly?
We placed a lien.
I know y'all took a property on our head, y'all tore it down. I had to wind up paying the bill with the taxes on Apple Street over there. So the city do get all that money back? How long do you take?
As the responsible owner, you paid it. So we typically have a problem with collection of that. But the lien is there so that that deed cannot be transferred until the city has been satisfied with the money to David invested for the lien.
I would just, I would just curious, I know, I hear y'all talking, do y'all get, do y'all get the personal opportunities to?
Absolutely.
To go ahead and rebuild the homes up and, or cut the grass, opportunity to cut the grass?
What may end up happening is they don't get it done, and then it comes back to the council who has sat here and heard on this particular property, whatever it is, that they haven't done what they were going to do in a timely fashion. Then the council has to make a decision then. Do we extend the timeline? Because it looks like they may be doing something. Or do we demo it because they're just not doing anything to the property, for whatever reason? Most of the time, 99.9% of times, because they don't have the funds to do it.
If you communicate with us, we're not in the business of tearing your house down.
I know that, I know that, but...
Yeah, well, I'd probably, I'd probably wait longer than the average code enforcement officer would wait to tear a house down because of communicating with owners and giving them opportunity to do something.
Well, do, another question, and then we move on. Do like the homeowners say they can't afford to have it towed down, and then y'all put that lien against them, and then they can't pay that lien, do they lose their property?
That lien is there until the property is transferred, either sold or mortgaged. If that owner wants to do a new construction, that lien has to be satisfied prior to... We won't issue a permit, we won't get lights, we won't get water or any services from the city until that lien is satisfied.
But they don't lose their property. Y'all want to take the property, sell it. All right.
It's a lien.
All right, got you. Lien?
Let's move on. Last call for anyone for 107, East David Drive.
I make a motion for demolition.
Let me, councilman, let me, if you don't mind, let me do a recommendation first.
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I know we've gone through a lot of, just want to make sure we're, we're recommending demolition so in the record that we're in favor of, of the demo. I did, I spoke with the owner of this property. As you can see, it's pretty terribly burned. They've, they've tried to do some things themselves with the removal of decking off the roof, but they're going to probably end up letting the city do it. So we recommend demolition for 107, East David Drive.
I make a motion for the demolition of a property located at 107 East David Drive.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Divitorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number six, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at 201 Magazine Street. 98% damage located in Council District 1. The owner is Mattel L. Johnson, 201 Magazine Street, Hammond, Louisiana. Anyone here on that matter? If you'd like to speak?
Yeah, we planning on tearing the house...
Sorry, can you state your name and address?
Zandra beyond me, her grand, her granddaughter. She's deceased. And my mom's deceased over there. And we planning on tearing the house down.
Okay. Do you know how, have you?
Huh?
Have you received costs or bids to do that? Do you have a timeline?
No, my brother, my brother and my husband is going to do it.
You have an idea how much time it would take them to, to do the demolition?
Hmm, three to four weeks, unless, depending on the weather.
That's fast.
Yeah, we, we know it. Yeah, it's not a big... And we got stuff stored in there.
So would a month be sufficient?
Mm-hmm.
Just, well, as an old government worker, if we do contingency, can we go 68? Is that too long?
Can we split it at 45? Split it at 45?
I think 40, 45 would be, because what's going to happen when you start, yes, it'll start deteriorate when you start demolishing it. You're going to have hazardous situations, so you don't want it to sit out there too long.
Oh, okay.
Partially torn.
If I need, if I need more time, I come to the office and let you know the process and we can talk.
Generally, unless you're substantially about to finish up, you know, time, you really need to make a substantial difference in demoing it down. That's why we're asking you now, how long do you think it'll take? And that's the challenge y'all have as a council to decide.
Well, I see, I see.
It's just a challenge on both sides.
Basically, basically, just, I'd say getting it down, it can take...
Well, you said two or three weeks, so 45 days, you ought to be okay. Okay.
I'll say that this council is quite motivated to, to get houses cleared, so, you know, maybe act like it's 30 days when you have 45s.
Right.
You want to have two weeks.
We got a good stretch of good weather coming up here, so.
Oh, yeah.
Time to get on it.
Mr. Mitchell?
So we recommend demolition for 201 Magazine with the owner having the option to do demo with a 45-day limit.
Motion approved.
Second.
Wait, okay.
Motion by Councilman Divitorio, second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Divitorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number seven, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at 609 Hoover Street. 97% damage located in Council District 1. The owner is Dorothy and Alma L. Brumfield, care of Dorothy Brumfield, 14496 West David Drive, Hammond, Louisiana. We have property owner here? State your name and address for the record.
Beverly Ann Brumfield, Maryland, 609 and a half East Hoover Street, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401. I'm answering. I've applied for the permit to renovate this property.
Renovate it?
Yes. I'm waiting for a response from the permit builder.
Do we grant permits on properties that are proposed to be demolished?
Is that 97%?
No, it's about 50%.
Okay. I'm just looking at what I, I'm just looking at what we have. It said 97, so...
50%, the kitchen and the living room burned up.
Okay.
We want to reframe it, reconstruct it.
Mr. Mitchell, do we, we grant permits for properties that are pending?
This is, this is pretty surprising. It's surprising to me that they're requesting a repair. It's pretty badly burned. What I would like to do from a safety standpoint is go ahead and recommend demolition with the option to repair, giving, giving her 30 days to make a substantial difference on the structure, and then we'll revisit. And at that time, if it hasn't been, because it's, it's, it's a lot of...
I have to get the permit. I haven't received that. It's going to have to be longer than 30 days.
How long does it take for them to give you a permit?
I don't know. They haven't, I haven't received it yet. I applied. Yeah, I, I applied. I'll go back by it.
Roughly a week, you're saying, it's been in the office?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go research. Let's give it 45 days to make a substantial difference on the exterior. Councilman, how do you, how do you feel about your...
Here's my question. I'm hearing 50%, but on your paperwork, you're saying that this property is 97% damaged. Which one is it?
It's 50.
Oh, no.
It says 97% on here.
Plumbing still works. We got to re-plant it and re-roof it, the whole structure, because the kitchen and the living room part, half of it just still standing. And the bathroom was, the living room and the kitchen area did burn on one end.
When'd you do this inspection, Bobby?
This is, I mean, I could tell you the exact date of inspection. What, what happens a lot of times is, this is a perfect example of a trained eye versus someone that, that wants to do just general repair. When something is burned, when there, when there's a deterioration, compromise in the structure of the lumber, that lumber can't be utilized. It has to be changed out completely. Now, I'm, I'm not sure who she's gotten to look at it, but it's probably them thinking that they can't, that they don't have to change that material.
We're going to re-roof it, a brand new roof. That's what I'm saying.
Do you have other pictures of this structure?
From that, from the front photograph, and, yeah, it's...
Last half of you see the houses standing on the kitchen side and living side where it was caught a fire, that part burned.
Oh, yeah. The only, the only reason this structure is not 100% is because of the foundation.
It's still standing. So I'm requesting that you...
Bobby, should we table this and give you time to look at the permits, see what's applied, come back to the council with more information about?
If she submitted, she submitted, are you aware of a permit, C.C. has been submitted? Because it's probably our front desk that has one, but what I, what I would like to do, I don't want to not move forward with one or the other. I want to have, go ahead and do a, a recommendation for demolition. And she has the option to repair, but I like the burden of proof to be on the owner and the responsibility on the owner to show us a substantial improvement.
You can't recommend that it be demolition until I get a permit.
With the option to repair. You have the option to repair. But we don't want to compromise our option to demo.
I understand you already in front of them, but we requesting to repair.
We will, we will allow you to do that, but we're going to have to give us, we'll compromise with you with the option to repair.
You can't grant the approval for the permit until she's submitted things, right? So we're not sure if you can even give her a permit to repair.
But then he shouldn't offer a demolition...
That's, that's why, is the word option enough or we need to do something different?
It's up to whoever the council chooses to do. Is there a way we can, I guess, maybe table it to the next meeting? And, and, and clarify if there's a permit has been submitted?
The next meeting is June 11th. Is there a reason why you don't want to table it and have a full understanding of whether they can even qualify for it?
No, no, no. Yeah, it's, it's, it's been, this house has been burned for a question of time.
Yeah, my little sister, they notified her, but they didn't notify me. So I'm here to respond. So now I'm ready to move forward.
And you live on site behind that she...
I live on site on the premises, and I'm ready to move it.
If in fact a permit has been submitted, an application for a permit, I should say that, has been submitted, I will find that out tomorrow when I, when I go to the office. 45 days is plenty enough time to make a substantial improvement on the structure. If she's serious about doing it, is what I'm saying.
That's my family home.
If, if we table it...
You've been there for how long?
I've been there 11 years behind it.
So you knew it burned when it burned?
Yeah, but I didn't know he notified her until a little while ago.
See, I think, I'm sorry.
They didn't notify me.
Sorry, what's that? Go ahead.
I just want to ask one thing. If we table it to next meeting, Andre, if nothing has been done, there's no permit, nothing, nothing has been factored, none's been done, we can approve the demolition to move forward then? We wouldn't have to wait 45 days, right? Well, that depends upon what we think the timing is to get it done. You can...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You have 30 days anyway because of the state requirement of 30 days.
My only concern is if we, if we couch this in terms of giving the owner an opportunity to repair, there might be an implication that we're giving her a permit to repair it. And it might be that after her application is reviewed, the city says, you can't repair it, and we're going to deny you a permit to repair it.
That's right.
I don't want to give her a false hope that this council is authorizing a repair because the building department may say, you can't repair it.
Well, the, the notice that she sent out was to request whether we wanted to repair or demolish it, so we want to repair it.
Excuse me.
Excuse me one minute, ma'am, uh, what's your name?
Beverly A. Brumfield.
Okay, Ms. Brumfield, I'm asking you one question. Now, you said the notice didn't go to you at all.
Why?
The notice went to your sister. And see, and I don't think y'all realize, see, this the issue that we having, the notice always go to the wrong people.
Not true.
Not that she's the wrong person.
No, okay.
Not true, she's just not, she's not saying that she wasn't aware, she's saying that the owner was notified, which is her sister, that's who's- that's who's in charge of the property.
Okay, so, what's her sister's name, 'cause I'm looking at the paper?
Dorothy.
Okay. So, you and your sister own the property?
Right.
And you wanna save the property?
I'm gonna save the property.
And she has the right for that attempt, I just wanna make sure that we're clear, that the city doesn't want to procrastinate on a six-month process if she's not gonna pursue it, that's- that's all I'm saying.
I'm here tonight to pursue it. We're gonna renovate the property.
Okay, Mr. Andre, let me ask you the question now. Okay, if the city tear the property down, the city gonna have a lien against the property?
Yes, sir.
But here she's standing up before the city, saying that she wanna repair the house.
Sometimes the owners are very ambitious, and they think they can repair it, but they really can't, and the building department may refuse a permit to her, based on what she's trying to do with the property. The city might say, "Ma'am, that's not sufficient, and that's not gonna be adequate." So I don't want her to believe that the council might be giving her a false hope that you have an ability to repair it, but the permit's not approved. So now, if Bobby is saying that he doesn't believe the house can be repaired, then you need to look at that information to say, "We order demolition." Now, you might say, "Well, demolition, but the owner has time to repair it," but repair it what? To- to the approval of who? We've gotta be clear about when we're tearing down someone's home, we know exactly what the rule is.
Who issues the permit? Who goes out and issues the permit?
Our office, permit office.
Okay, so the last time y'all been out there to the property was a while, or?
I- I just went out yesterday.
Yesterday, okay.
I passed through.
And you have no recollection of any permit being turned in, right?
No.
No permit been turned in, and it didn't look any different as of yesterday?
No, it's, yeah. And I wasn't, we weren't working yesterday, but I passed- passed through the area, but I'm saying, I- what I do when I put these on the list, we do weekly monitoring to make sure that there are no changes made, so that we don't have to submit it to council. If they've already made substantial improvement, either demolition or repairs-
Well, you went yesterday, so would you give the permit to the- the property from which you saw yesterday?
I don't- I don't review- I don't review for- for repairs, that's- that's my supervisor, the building department.
So, this is what, forty-five days? If you- if we were to do forty-five days, that's actually longer than if we tabled it and then gave thirty days. So, I think it would make more, I mean, it's one day. So, I would recommend that we table this until next meeting, and to give you time to find a permit and determine whether it's sufficient for the city's purposes.
I think that's the better approach. That way you'll have more information when it comes time to vote, whether you wanna demolish it, or whether you give her an opportunity to repair it.
That's my motion.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion to table to June eleventh.
That'll be on June eleventh, Ms. Brumfield.
Okay.
Okay? We will make a decision at that meeting.
And Bobby, if you can help us with to track down her permit application, and make sure it just doesn't get hung up somewhere, so we're not sitting here on June eleventh, saying it's still hung up somewhere.
Number eight, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located 807 East Park Avenue, ninety percent damage, located in Council District One. The owner is Charles Tillis, 512 Hoover Street, Hammond, Louisiana.
That owner is here as well?
Okay. Come to the mic and give us your name and address, please.
Charles Tillis, 14th 10th Sunday, Hammond, Louisiana.
Okay.
We like to, uh, fix it up if we can. We, uh, where I started on is, you know, we- we got, we had a permit, uh, a while back, you know, to do it, you know, but we never got started, but we- we like to fix it up. The back part of the house got burned, but the front part didn't. It just really got water damaged.
When did the- when did it burn? How long ago?
I don't know, it been-
Three, four years.
Three, four years ago, you know?
Is this also a location that has had a couple of other very small fires, like vandals or whatnot?
No.
Just one. Just one fire.
Just one fire.
Just one?
Any questions? Mr. Mitchell, you wanna give us your assessment of it?
Yeah, I went, I got a call from Mr. Tillis this morning, we played phone tag most of the day, so I was informed that he had torn down the damaged portion of the- of the house in the rear, because the entire house burned, but the rear was substantially burned, so that part has been since removed. Hasn't been removed from the property, but it's been piled up and separated from the primary structure. So, it's totally stripped out, there's nothing in there except floors, walls, and ceiling joists. So he has- he has a potential possibility of doing repair on this, what's- what's left, the primary structure that's left. I would certainly like to hold him to removing all of the debris, as well as the damaged shed in the rear, for, as a- as a courtesy to the city to- to move forward with possible repair. Do you have any idea how many months or days it would take you to do repair on the structure?
Just give me about six months.
The, so you said that the structure on the back was removed and taken off, so does that change your percentage?
It does, it does. So it's- it's since- since removal of that particular portion of the structure, it's probably only about fifty-five percent damage now.
So right on the line of-
Yeah, it's borderline, I'm more willing to wanna work with him, I don't wanna work, I'm not a six-month workable kinda guy, but-
The only time I had to work on it is on the weekend, you know? That's the only time I had a chance to work on the house.
Is there some type of, you know, um-
So how long has it been like this, for three or four years?
Yeah, they- the previous, uh-
And so now, wait till this last point, right here, until now, to go and deal with it?
We don't want to tit- we don't wanna tit the whole thing down.
So, this one would be a good example of why is it just now being brought, right? If it's been for three or four years?
Well, they acquired a permit to renovate, and so they- they did a substantial amount of, uh, they tore the interior demolition, they went in and tore out what was damaged by fire, sheet rock, wiring, all of the finished plumbing, fixtures, everything were done. And so that sufficed with somewhat of a compromise with- with some progress from the owners. The rear has always been the greatest hazard, but it is fenced in, so they've- they've kept it protected from public. I'm not really happy about the yard maintenance, we've always had to notify them for grass and trash removal. But if, moving forward, if he's able to, I'm- I'm in agreement with sixty days for installing doors and windows and making it appear to be repaired.
How big is the house?
What's left is probably about nine hundred to a thousand square feet.
So we need some doors installed and windows, so, sixty days?
So, look, uh, Mr. Tillis, so y'all been working on the house already? Yeah, we have. So, the percentage on the paperwork is saying ninety percent damage, am I right or wrong?
That was before they tore down the back part?
Before they tore down the back.
Right, now that's different, because they tore down the back.
When- when- then when this paperwork came out? Because it's saying ninety percent, because see, I'm lost.
That's for the entire structure, he just tore down the- the damaged portion, was yesterday or this morning, or the weekend?
It was last week.
Yeah, so-
Last week, okay. Bobby, when the last time you went out and saw the house?
Obviously, this, uh, this morning, when I got a call, saying that he had torn down a portion of the house. Like I said, we were playing phone tag, and he called to let me know he was trying to aggressively move-
So you went and saw the house this morning?
This morning.
Okay, so what percent you would come up with now, on the house?
I just informed the president, fifty, fifty percent, approximate. Remember, the calculations are done by computer as well, and we put in what's damaged, that calculation is done by a computer. Sometimes, sometimes the foundation would calculate for more of a percentage than a wall would, so-
Councilman Andrews?
Here's my question.
Yes.
You stated that a permit had been put in place for this property, how long does the permit last?
As- as long as there are continuing work on the structure?
A year.
Well, we just gotta go about, you know, that's your job, and, you know, is to go around checking these demolition properties out, so, you know, I hate to see you go around here and bring this up to us every, you know, meeting demo, you know, do a demolition, and then everybody starts working on it at the last minute, and- and you went out there and you didn't see much difference from it. And, you know, to me, to sit here and allow sixty more days for, I mean, for the property to, I mean, had three or four years, I just- I just don't, uh, I just don't understand, you know, if it was my property, I wouldn't be phone tagging with anybody, I would wanna make sure I was responding to the code official, you know, about tearing down the property. So, you know, we wanna see y'all continue to do a good job, what y'all do in the city with, you know, all these demolitions. So, I mean, you know, what all does he need to do to get it up to where it falls in the line of where it needs to be?
Well, considering- considering the fact that he stripped out the entire interior, and- and there are very few damaged studs inside of the structure, if- if the exterior is maintained, the grounds are cleared, the rest of the debris is removed, and the shed is torn down, and it looks aesthetically like a new location, then we're okay with him doing a progressive, we'll revisit, we don't want him to stop, I'm saying we'll revisit in that timeframe to make sure he continues.
And you said some of the grass isn't usually cut either at the property?
No, we always have to notify him.
Okay, and that's, I mean, you know, I don't know-
He shares ownership with- with someone on the property as well, and that's what, that may have been part of what's been going on, but you gotta understand, we're doing probably three hundred locations a year on grass and trash and debris, it's- it's, so I'm like you, I don't, at the last minute, someone finally woke up, you know, I wanna work with them, but at the same time, it's a lot of work to prepare, and then- then they do the same thing again. I just wanna make sure that they're responsible.
Let me understand, so this property now is up under a permit?
No, no, that permit has expired.
So it's not under the permit?
So before he can do anything, he's gotta reapply?
Reapply, correct, correct. Which is why we're here, because nothing's been done.
So right now, he had fifty percent, right? Am I right, he had fifty percent?
Approximately.
Okay. And he's already started working on the house, but you know, I see it like we're gonna have a real problem, look like, because what's going on, and which I don't blame him. Uh, let me share the story with you. One time, the city had did this to me, they put, me and Mr. CeCe, we laughed about it, uh, two weeks ago, the city put a sign on my house, and that the house needed to be tore down, or whatever, and so I ended up fixing the house up.
Great job, you did a great job.
Yeah, I know, y'all talking, but y'all ain't give me no money on it. And I'm just saying this here, for the future, and I mean, it's for anybody, it doesn't matter who you are, for the future, and what we looking at, three years, four years, however long the house been burned down, and he just started working on it. And which I have sympathy for anybody, because I know everybody different, but we can't go through this here, every council meeting, when y'all bring, when you bring a list in that the houses need to be tore down, honestly, I'm talking about whether it's the brother, the sister, the cousin, whoever named the property on, we got to get, we gotta do a better record than what we have. Because this here, uh, Ms. Dorothy, we just granted her, what, forty-five more days?
No, table it, table it.
We tabled her. Okay, so now we're looking at another problem with, uh, Mr. Tillis, and we can't keep going through this, so I think we all need to sit down, when we get a chance, and get together and come up with a better solution on what's going on now, because every time we go through these houses, we can't keep talking about these houses all day. Especially if the city set here and say one thing, and then the property owner go do work on the house, we come from ninety percent to fifty percent. And fifty percent, honestly, if I got fifty percent damage, you need to give me time to go and finish the house now.
Which is, which is my opinion. That's what we wanna do, give him- give him time to repair. I totally agree with that, I totally agree.
I remember, he just did fifty percent in the last two weeks, and three years it's been ninety percent.
And then another thing I didn't like about the grass deal, I mean, wherever, asking us for a favor about trying to postpone it, but you can't even keep the grass up and cut the grass underneath whatever the city requires, and he's gotta keep calling and going through all the protocol, and, you know, you wanna sit here and ask us for pretty much an extension to- to allow you to work on a property, but you can't even work with the code enforcement and keep the grass under a certain time. So, it makes it hard on us to sit here and- and grant you an extension whenever they have to come by every time and tell you about your grass being cut. I- I just don't understand how that goes.
When did the permit expire?
Years ago.
So how's he did the repairs in the last two weeks?
No, he did, he hasn't done repairs, he tore off, he demolished the rear of the structure, what was damaged. If you'll see in your photographs, should have a picture of the front, on your computers probably, picture of the front, and also a photograph of the rear, that's the primary reason why the structure was submitted. We've- we've been asking for that rear to be torn off, and that we would work with him on that verbally, over the last couple of years. And they'll go in and start something and stop, you know, so it's just kinda been a roller coaster. What's helped this situation?
What's your recommendation, Bobby, on this one?
I wanna recommend demolition, with the option to repair. Forty-five days has always been my concern, because it's thirty days mandatory with state for repeal, for appeal, and we give an additional fifteen days. If he make a substantial amount of improvement in that timeframe, then I feel that he should have the right to have our office to give him an extension. But I want the burden of proof to be on the owner, as well as the pressure on the owner.
And that includes debris removal?
Correct, correct.
I think part of your, I think part of your recommendation should be that the property's completely cleaned up within fifteen days or less. I mean, that needs to be the priority, let's get that done, because if you can't do that, how you gonna do the rest of it?
Right, I totally agree.
And the grass and everything, yes.
That's what I'm talking about, the debris, let's get all that cleaned up.
Totally cleared.
Fifteen days.
Sound of motion?
So, you making a motion? So we're gonna do, what was your recommendation again?
Demolition with the option to repair for forty-five days, with the understanding that he's gonna remove the existing demolition debris within- within fifteen days.
Okay.
So, motion move forward on giving the homeowner forty-five, with an option of forty-five days to repair, with a fifteen-day cleanup removal, debris removal.
Seconded motion.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number nine, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at nine oh three East Park Avenue, ninety-one percent damage, located in Council District One. The owner is Donald Andrew, ten sixty-one Forest Ridge, Luke, Pearl River, Louisiana. Bobby Mitchell.
Donald Andrew, uh, ten sixty-one Forest Ridge, Luke, Pearl River, Louisiana. I'm not here to question in the process, uh, I got the note, say tear down the house, I have no problem with that. Uh, I don't live there, it was a house that my dad had, uh, I inherited. I just, I'm here for the process, I don't know the process. I heard a lot of stories, I heard a lot of things, how, how business is being conducted. I don't have to agree with it, it's just the way it is. So, uh, I'm just here to, you know, tear down the property, I just need time. I work for the Department of State, I don't live in Hammond, I travel a lot. So, whatever days y'all give me to get the house torn down, 'cause I definitely don't want Hammond tearing it down with the price that I just heard. So, there ain't no way in the world I'm gonna pay that kind of money to tear down the house. So that, that's why I'm here, so. Forty-five days, that's what I heard, right?
That's pretty good, nice to meet you.
I'm not trying to repair it, I, I mean, y'all want it down, I'm gonna take it down.
Mr. Mitchell, do we provide people with contacts for demolition contractors?
We have, we have available, um, a list of licensed contractors that we can, uh...
People who are out of town, this gentleman here.
Let me give you a card, you can call or email me, I can give you...
You never have to call me for the grass either.
That's exactly right, we appreciate you.
Mr. Mitchell, your recommendation?
Yeah, recommendation is to demolish, uh, give the owner, uh, additional fifteen days, uh, forty-five total, to have it demolished.
From what date, from what day?
Today.
Today, today.
I second that motion.
No, you have to make the motion.
Okay, well, I make a motion that the property here on, uh, nine oh three East Park Avenue, we give the owner forty-five days to have this property, uh, the demolition taken care of.
And just to be clear, your, your, the motion is to be demolished, but you're gonna give the owner a chance to do that within forty-five?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number ten, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at three oh seven East Coleman Avenue, ninety-one percent damage, located in Council District Two. The owner is James M. Hughes, care of Marguerite Morgan, P.O. Box fourteen-ten, Ponchatou, Louisiana. Property owner here? Yes.
Yes, you want to speak?
I'm gonna state my name. My name is Marguerite Morgan, I'm the sister of James M. Hughes, and my address is post office, Box fourteen-ten, Ponchatou, Louisiana. And, Mr. Mitchell is gonna speak for me, if that's okay?
Yes, absolutely.
'Cause I'm shy.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, ma'am. Spoke with, uh, the owner just prior to the, um, regular session. She is in favor of demolition. She also has a pending sale for, for the property. Uh, want to have a sixty-day allowance in order to get the property sold. So I'd like to, I recommend demolition, allowing her sixty days to, uh, sell the property. After which, we move forward with bits and demolitions.
Bobby, let me ask you this question, so we don't run into the trap of that purchaser buying a property subject to demolition, how, how is the purchaser gonna know that this property may be demolished?
She's, she's spoken with the, um, with the person interested, and, uh, they are, they're aware of the fact that, that it's been submitted tonight for, for demolition, and they're going to come to our office for possible repair or demolition, whichever one they decide, once they, once they look at it.
That's kind of...
Do we have something in writing, do we have something certified or something in writing?
Potential contract sale purchase.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is we're just giving her additional fifteen days, uh, as opposed to the thirty, forty-five, giving her sixty days to, to make the transaction for the sale.
How much is, what you don't know?
I don't think that helps the situation, I think we're in the same situation that we described earlier, so is there something in writing to the people, rather than just, I, not that I don't trust your word, of course, but, but perhaps you could share that contact information with Bobby, and then he could, in, in writing, certified letter, notify that potential purchaser about the state of the, of the property?
Yeah, so whatever we have something that is pinned, that we have voted on, it's sixty days pending demolition, that that notice gets sent. It's still not full proof, 'cause you don't know who, you know, if it's a potential purchaser.
Just a potential.
Is there a contract on it right now?
Not, not today.
Is there a purchase agreement or anything?
No purchase agreement today.
Okay. Maybe we should do it contingent upon some kind of purchase agreement that's...
Yeah, I informed her, yeah, that she should, uh, contact us ASAP, um, the next couple of weeks.
Bobby, let me ask you this question, so with the council, when they vote to demolish a property, when do you file something of public record that lets the public know that this property is subject to demolition?
We, uh, send, there is a document that's, uh, based on a recommendation of council that's mailed to that owner, letting him know what the decision of the council was.
Right.
Uh, signed by the president of council, uh, this be your first signature of those.
When do we file that up, that gets filed of public record?
After, after we receive, uh, proof of return receipt, receipt mailed from that owner, that they've received the, um, notice of the council, and we file that, we file that lien.
So typically, what is that time?
With the clerk of court.
Yeah, so typically, what is that timeframe?
Basically, twenty-one days, anywhere from two to three weeks.
So there's a little bit of a gap there.
A gap.
Well, and if they don't accept the green card, then, then those can be held for six...
These laws are good a long time, so...
You know, the truth in the matter of demolition, and I'm not gonna say that you can't do it any cheaper, getting more and more bids, but the only way generally to get a cheaper cost to demo a house is when the individuals themselves come up here and say, "I'm demoing it myself."
Absolutely.
Not getting a contractor to do it, because it's not gonna cost any less than this, which is usually four, five, six. This is a bigger house, this might cost seven.
Oh, yeah, probably seven, eight thousand with a house this size, 'cause it's, it's pretty, pretty huge.
Legally, tear it down, haul it, put some dirt, fill up the hole. The only way it's cheaper is when the cust, when the cut, uh, the citizen says, "I'm tearing it down myself." So, you know, to me, ma'am, you, you almost, it's almost a situation like Devon was talking about earlier. You talking about selling a property, new owner doesn't know anything about it, but you can tell them about it, that's not a good way to let the next guy do that. Why not demo the property and...
Let's let it be what it is, huh?
Well, but the new, the purchaser may, and it, the purchaser may want to fix it. I mean, that, why can't we have whatever is signed after what we say tonight be recorded without waiting on the green card? Is that a fair requirement for that? That would stop any potential purchasers, 'cause it's of record, and the conveyance records, or mortgage, whoever they file it.
Now, we file the lien, we file, I'm sorry, not lien, we file the letter of notice with the clerk's office, right after this is submitted to the, to the council. So there's, there's something of record.
Right now, there is.
Right.
In the, in the property records.
That initiated this notice.
Yeah, because the point is, we want the purchaser to have the heads up that this property is subject to a potential demolition.
Correct, correct.
Before they buy.
Then that should be sufficient for any sale that goes in front of a title attorney or even a notary. I mean, you have any of these cash sales, people don't check the record, that's, that's...
That's their risk.
That's their own, yeah, risk.
Are the sills on this house, Robert?
I'm sorry?
Base of the house, sills, are they rotten?
Oh, they're, they're terribly deteriorated. What, what's on, this is one of those old situations where you have, it's kind of a New Orleans-style home, you have the, um, old masonry on it, and, um, it traps mow and moisture and everything, it's, it's terribly deteriorated. The roof is collapsing. It'll be, it'll be a miracle to restore it. Of course, anything can be repaired with the right amount of money, but, depend on who wants to, uh, maintain the aesthetics of the house.
So what's your recommendation right here?
To do demolition, I want to recommend demolition with the option, uh, for sale.
I would like to say that the picture that y'all have in front of you is not the way the house looks now.
The grass.
The grass has been cut frequently, cut like every two or three weeks, so it's not growed up like that. And that picture, I don't know who took that picture, but it's poor quality. It makes the house look worse than what it is, trust me.
Well, I'm a state licensed contractor, what I'm concerned about is the integrity of the structure, and if the sills, which are the bottom...
Right, I understand.
Are rotted, then you, that's the base of the house. Is the roof leaking?
Yeah, it's, it's, the front portion of the roof is collapsing. Actually, this photograph doesn't show the last three weeks of deterioration that's, that's occurred. And that's a perfect example of what I see when we go in versus someone passing across the street that may not know that a dip in the decking is getting ready to fall in the next month because of rain and, and, uh, weight of the structure.
So Bobby, you recommend demolish, but give the owner sixty days to do the demolition?
Make a motion to demolish with the sixty days for the owner to demolish it themselves.
I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number eleven, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at four oh one South Cypress Street, seventy-six percent damage, located in Council District Two. The owner is E-Corp LLC and Sit LL LLC, six oh eight West Roberts Street.
This owner came in, they've, they've required their demolition permit. Supposedly, um, it should not be an issue, they're gonna have it demolished within the next three weeks. However, there have been cases where owners, for some unforeseen circumstances, don't get an opportunity to do what they want to do or have intentions of doing. So we want to make sure we recommend demolition for this structure. And if, if it happens by the owner, it happens, if not, we're able to proceed with our...
So thirty days.
Thirty days.
So move, I recommend, I, I recommend demolition in thirty days?
I second that motion.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Twelve, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at six eleven South Olive Street, ninety-two percent damage, located in Council District Two. The owner is Karen Porter, six one zero zero four North Military Road, Slidell, Louisiana.
I would like to ask that this item be removed, uh, from agenda due to, uh, ownership discrepancy. Six eleven, right.
There's a new owner? What's the owner's dis...
It's, it's in transition bank.
'Cause I know this won't be asked by my constituents, so, just curious.
So the bank should get over?
They're, they're not sure of who's, who's the real owner. We were, we were told by the assessor's office that someone had it, but they, they not, they don't actually have full ownership of the property. So the, um, tax purchaser was notified, uh, but the bank...
Yeah, and that's the challenge that we have, is you typically rely on the assessor's records for ownership, but sometimes that's not entirely current. So if we receive information that the owner may not be the one that the assessor shows, then I think we need to stand back and just double-check and be sure we're giving the owner correct, correct notice. And this is the example of it, right Bobby?
That's exactly what happened, exactly what happened.
Is this not something that the, uh, city attorney can confirm ownership with conveyance records? I mean, I know you're not in the business of abstracts, but, um, you know...
That's, that's part of what the department does, right Bobby?
Correct.
Now, if you need my assistance, you know I'm there to help you. But typically, it works out, but you, you have to rely on the records that you have. And, and we can check it one day, and it could be something different the next day.
So you obviously have access to the conveyance records and y'all...
And we also communicate with the assessor's office, particularly a week prior to this meeting. Want to make sure that something hasn't changed, and of course, that happened within the last seven working days. But it had already been submitted.
So you're asking that this be removed?
Yes.
Make a motion to remove.
I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved to remove.
Thirteen, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at nine hundred East Mary Avenue, eighty-five percent damage, located in Council District Two. The owner is Hilda White, two three one nine, Carol Anne Drive, Tracy, California. It's the owner here.
No, I did receive a phone call from, um, relative of the owner. They're planning to do the demolition themselves, we want to recommend demolition on this location. And should they do it, fine, if not, the city will proceed.
Thirty days?
Thirty days.
Make a motion to authorize demolition within thirty days.
I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number fourteen, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at five oh one Third Avenue, ninety-six percent damage, located in Council District Three. The owner is Willene P. Sanders, eight oh five East Coleman Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana. It's the owner here.
No. Recommend demolition of five oh one Third Avenue for thirty days.
Have you talked to the owners?
Have not.
Okay, everything's gone?
They've received the notification, but we haven't spoken with them. Uh, most owners are aware that it's coming, they just can't wait it out, don't want to spend that money until they have to.
So this is another one, this obviously has been pending a long time, why is it just now here?
They, they gotta, they received a demolition permit about eight months ago, I think it was eight to nine months ago. Found out the cost, kept talking with family members, uh, couldn't come up with the, the funds, so they decided to let the city do it.
Okay.
I make a motion for demolition of the property located at five oh one Third Avenue.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Fifteen, a resolution authorizing the demolition of property located at five oh eight Second Avenue, eighty-three percent damage, located in District Three. The owner is Tyroby M. Youngblood, six oh nine South Mooney Avenue, Louisiana.
Spoke with this owner, um, they want to perform a miracle, they wanted to do a renovation. But, um, I thought they were gonna be here to represent tonight, uh, I also spoke with his brother. And of course, he, he's, he's looking at, from the standpoint of the city, the same way I am, that it would cost an arm and a leg to repair this one. Uh, the roof has since collapsed, literally collapsed, uh, since the photograph. We're gonna recommend, uh, demolition for thirty days?
Uh, one second, please.
Yes.
Uh, I talked to the owner also.
Okay.
And, he's working offshore, and he asked me, could the city give him, uh, sixty days?
To do?
To, uh, to tear the house down.
For demolition?
Yeah.
You talked to Tyroby?
I talked to Tyroby. He work offshore, so he asked me, uh, could the city give him sixty days?
If, if you're in favor, councilman, I'm, I'm okay with sixty days, demolition with, uh, sixty days.
Yeah, I'm in favor for it.
Make a motion. It's motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
So the second?
I must go DiViterio, second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved for sixty days.
Sixteen, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at fifteen oh four Mooney Avenue, ninety-six percent damage, located in Council District Three. The owner is Esther J. Lee, Adal, care of Rodney Jones, sixteen oh three one Samoa Way, Houston, Texas.
Recommend demolition, if you look at your photograph, I think it's pretty obvious, mobile home.
Property owners...
For thirty days.
Make a motion to demo.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Number seventeen, a resolution to approve Hammond Harley Davidson to sell alcohol as part of the entry fee for a benefit poker run on Saturday, June first, two thousand nineteen, from nine AM to six PM, at fifteen thirty Southwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana. Jayden DeShaw.
Hi, everybody, um, so this Saturday, we are the starting and ending, ending point for, um, a benefit poker run for a Hammond PD officer who's diagnosed with cancer. All the fundraisers are gonna go towards the surgery that he's having in a couple of weeks. There's an admission fee to, to ride, it's twenty dollars a bike, five dollars a passenger, and with that included, they get beer after the ride. And Ollie Barley is donating the beer to the two officers who are planning the event. So, it's gonna be the same thing, wristbands, I have, uh, RV card certified bartenders who are gonna be working. And that's about it.
So, you guys seem to have a lot of parties. You get, um, a permit from ATC, correct?
Yes, there's, we get twelve a year.
Okay, but you're doing the monthly, right, pretty much?
Yeah, so I'm doing monthly from March to October, and then there's like one or two somewhere else in there.
Okay, so you're, you all, you are staying within that twelve?
Yes, I am, yes, ma'am, I'm paying attention to it too.
I mean, you wouldn't be able to get one from ATC, so, okay. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
18, a resolution to approve Hammond Harley Davidson to obtain a waiver of open container law for a benefit poker run on Saturday, Jan, June 1st, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at 1530 Southwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana. Same thing. Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 19, a resolution to ratify and reject all bids for Hammond Park Improvements, Kate Square and MLK Park, project number 11913, due to being over budget.
As you can see linked up, we only received two bids on this project, and so we are recommending to go ahead and reject all the bids. We are going to redesign elements, hopefully, and come better within budget. We've already met with Holly and Smith and talked over a few things. They're kinda thinking through some other things. Hopefully, we're gonna find a good, affordable project, and I know we had had some conversations about making sure that additional contractors who may be eligible could be added to the list.
I know, they're getting rid of the arch.
Yes.
Hey, it's over budget, right? Any comment or questions? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 20, a resolution to approve the purchase of police vehicle equipment for $35,000 from Fleet Safety Equipment, Chief Roger On.
This is to outfit the units that y'all approved last time with the equipment that goes inside and on top of the units.
Is this a bid out, or is this a contract?
Some of it's under state contract, and some of it's piggyback off East Baton Rouge.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
21, a resolution authorizing change order number one, final for re, for rehabilitate runway 1836 and 1331, Phase 3 construction, project 21702, Brian Smith.
Brian Smith, Michael Baker International, 2600, City Place, Baton Rouge, Louisiana. We are requesting the reconcor, the approval of the reconc, rec, the final change jar, thank you, that reconciles all of the, the unit prices, excuse me, quantities in unit prices for the project. This is the project that was approved for substantial completion at the last council meeting, and there's a tally of everything in the, in the back. There's any questions?
All this was state or federal money, correct?
Correct, this is 90% federal, 10% state money, and we're requesting that it's approved concurrent with the state and federal approval.
Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, final adoption of ordinance. Number one, a final adoption of an ordinance for rezoning by Jamestown Properties LLC to rezone 16 lots, 9A through 16B of the Hundred Oaks subdivision, located on Fern Street from RS 11 to RS 5 in accordance with survey of Brett J. Martin dated 4/18/2019. Recommended approval by the zoning commission.
Again, Jennifer Lee, on behalf of Jamestown Properties, and we have gone through this process of planning and zoning for several months. This is a subdivision that was originally approved almost 20 years ago. In 2000, it was a 16-lot subdivision, 100-foot lots. Nearly 20 years later, one lot's been sold. So, the property's been sold, the new property's trying to, the property owner's reconfiguring some things and trying to make the property more marketable. Thus, and there were concerns from neighbors on Parker Street and the existing property owner, as well as some, you know, some other surrounding neighbors. And we, we met with those neighbors, we addressed those concerns, we reconfigured everything again, and we drew it. And only now, we're seeking the rezoning of the Fern Street, not the entire parcel, from 16 to 8 lots. So, it's 100-foot lots to 15-foot, 50-foot lots, and it's RS 11 to RS 5. So, south on Old Covington Highway, we've talked with neighbors there, some in Forbes Farm. Also, you heard Wes to TJ Seal earlier in the public hearing, and then also some of the property owners on the north. No property, no neighbors have objected, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends rezoning of this property. So, we'd ask the city council to rezon.
One second. I just wanna make something, I know we had our public hearing. You mentioned about property values. I just wanna make sure you knew that the new zoning will allow 50% of that lot to be built out as a house, which would be a 4,600-square-foot house on those lots. So, value might be not that much in question. The existing house, the one that was built on Parker, is a 4,100-square-foot house.
That keeps, yeah, okay.
Yeah, there was one, there was one disgruntled owner that was here a few months ago. So, we all got that all straight.
Yeah, Ms. Villa Ruba, and she's the owner of Lot 4 on Parker Boulevard, and she was just concerned about issues, drainage, and just traffic on Parker Boulevard. So, we reconfigured, so we're not changing, you know, we, the lots are on Fern Street, not on Parker.
But what can you say that the concerns for Parker could equally be said for Fern? There just, there happens to be no one living there to voice that concern.
The streets, the streets are different size.
And, and they've never been marketed, that I'm aware of. So, I know you keep suggesting a point about being more marketable, but if they've never been on the market or for sale, then.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't know that. I don't know the history of that.
Make a comment about that, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the approval.
I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion denied.
Motion, motion's approved to deny the ordinance. So, the motion was approved, which denies the ordinance.
Correct. All right, oh. Nothing for, except for public hearing. A motion to adjourn?
Make a motion that we adjourn. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Devan, a second, cause he's.